Okay. Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call our public hearing to order. Glenn, please call the roll.
Pat West, Ward one is asked this evening. Greg Drew, Ward two.
Present.
Drew Worley, Ward three.
Present.
Jeff Lucas, Ward four.
Present.
Ryan Holmes, Ward five.
Here.
Gary Howe at large.
Here.
John Gabriel, President of the Council.
Here.
Mayor Fortfilder.
I am here.
Danny Hendricks, Finance Director. President of the Valley Area Service Director.
Here.
Chris Howard, City Engineer.
Here.
Susan Anderson, Law Director.
Here.
Okay, thank you. The next topic here is the open discussion on the tax budget. Amy, I'm going to let you lead off that discussion.
Okay, thank you, Council President. This evening we have for our final reading, the 2026 Tax Budget. The purpose of the tax budget is not to grant a spending authority, but it's to illustrate and demonstrate the need for the taxes that are assessed to the County Budget Commission. And we file that with Erie County. For this year's tax budget, the timetable, the ad for the Notice of Hearing was published in the photo journal on March 26th. The original draft was provided to council on 3/31 and was discussed at the meeting on 4/7 of 25. And based on the actions on that April 7th meeting, the changes to the road tax, I updated the budget and sent it back out on April 9th of 2025 for council's review. And the final discussions were held in the Finance Committee and was concluded in the minutes of April 14. The tax budget variables for the current year are projected based on the unencumbered cash balance for each fund based on December 31st of 2025. So we're projecting out to the end of the current year. We've used the estimated revenue for 2026 for each fund and the projected expenses for 2026. However, as part of the provisions of the tax budget, the expenses cannot exceed the available cash. So if they would on a normal basis, we have to trim that back. So we have at least a zero balance on any given fund. The assumptions are that the revenue estimates are based on the current year, plus or minus any known changes. Real estate tax estimates are based on the collection year 2025 data approved or provided by the Erie County Auditor's Office. Expenses are based largely on the 2025 appropriations. Salary and fringes have been increased at 3.5% over 2025. However, the current negotiated agreements end on December 31st, 2025. All other expense categories are increased on an average of 4% overall. And if there are any questions, I can entertain those at this time.
Any questions from council? No? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and we also entertain questions from the audience on our tax budget. If anybody has any questions, Mr. Taff, please report. Name and address, if you will, sir.
Homer Taff, 3972 Edgewater Drive. I think I get to be the first person unmoved out here to say, President Gabriel, members of council, members of the administration. I had planned to speak on this, but it'll save me maybe a couple of minutes next time. And I had written to you about the ordinance on income tax and the ordinance on the Streets Fund. I just, I think the record should be corrected. There's not one word in 2025-12 that says a word about taking anything away from the roads. That doesn't exist. It didn't necessarily repeal what you did with the roads. I've also provided you with some information. But if you read 2016-61, this is relied upon, aside from the fact that it amended something that was not in existence at the time, and aside from the fact that it required all credit to be given to the roads, which was never done, it is clear that 2016-77 replaced it within two weeks. So no money was taken from the roads. And I would advocate that the entire amount of $600,000 should continue to go to the roads. I think the roads are being starved, which I review. Another thing about the way in which I think we can afford it. But I do think that we need to correct that record. I would mention, I was not able to see the actual product because it wasn't attached to the ordinance that's online. But I have every confidence that Miss Hendricks, she generally does what bookkeeping is impeccable in the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other question or comments from the audience this evening? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. Just so everybody knows, that is on for a third reading this evening. So we will deal with that in our regular council meeting, which we have now called a order. We will start that with a Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of prayer or sign of reflection.
The urgent flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as we've already called roll this evening, we are going to skip that portion of your agenda and move on to the approval of Special Vermillion City Councilments of April 14th, 2025, and a motion to approve the minutes of April 14th. So move.
Sir.
Is there any discussion, any additions or? Please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Mush and Carrot?
Thank you. And this evening, we had several people signed in. Starting again with Mr. Taff, you're first on the list. But once again, come up, we already have your address.
Sorry about that. Homer Taff, 3972 Edgewater Drive, for the record. Since I've seen a number of people sign up, I'll try and keep it very brief this evening. I did notice that 2025-10 was brought off the table or is being suggested to be brought off the table. And I'm curious why.
Sorry, just have an issue right here. Let me take care of it. Sir?
I'm assuming. Proceed.
So 2025-10?
Yes.
That you're referring to, yeah. It's been tabled and we are either going to, well, instead of having it perpetually tabled, we're going to bring it up, discuss it, either get rid of it or proceed with it.
It was amended in its proposal to say that it was because of the wastewater treatment.
Right.
Based on information received from Stralarius, roughly 30% of the streets are not served by the sewer promptly. Close to 50, 60% of the land of the city is not served by the sewer. But they're all taxpayers. They pay income tax and real estate tax. They do not pay sewer tax. So why are they paying for what the wastewater treatment plan is? Especially when we're not reopening or asking the folks over in Vermillion Township who are getting a very good deal, and I specified that further in my letter. Why are we not charging them? And why are we charging people in our city? We do not and cannot and will not serve. Doesn't make sense. I also made a comment about, I believe it's 30 is the one that takes $500,000 and says it's because of the takeaway of the road tax. We didn't take away the road tax. It should be $600,000. As you know, I have given you something that says we probably should have a levy and put it on, you know, through by August for a bond issue. And I believe the right number is two to three, but two to three mils. But y'all can talk about it. It's your decision to make. But I believe that we could make a tremendous impact on catching up for a bond issue. And that's something that everybody in the city, every property owner would pay for, every taxpayer would pay for, not just some. With respect to ordinances 27 and 28, I pointed out before, if at least Mr. Gabriel's ever had the benefit of my esteemed wisdom, but I'll mention it again. You're taking it out of the general fund, this ordinance, and that's wrong. You should be taking it out of the water funds. Ordinances call out funds that are to be specified, but isn't addressed to the general fund. Again, not everybody in the city is or can be served by city water. So taking it out of the general fund for the distribution department isn't really the right way to go. So those are a few things that I would suggest for your consideration. Thanks very much. I'll let the other folks talk.
Thank you. Mr. Matt Thompson?
Name and address, counsel, mayor.
Name and address, please, I'm sorry.
Matt Thompson, 455 Nicholson Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm here to discuss, see if we can maybe call some additional attention and maybe solicit a greater response from the community to the road conditions, Nicholson Avenue. A few weeks ago, again, this last week, I submitted to the HERC some good information, photos, dates, hopefully some things that you had a chance to review. Are there any individuals here that have not seen that or have not had a chance to review it to date? Everyone has seen it? Okay, wonderful. So especially what we have, we've got a condition where we've got about 12 residents that live along Nicholson and a few businesses. One business that accesses their property at the south end of Nicholson, they contribute about 99% of the truck traffic and all traffic on that road. I understand that for the longest time, that road has not really been a priority of the community. It's been, if not ignored, neglected, kind of out of sight, out of mind. It is a dedicated street from Liberty all the way down to the termination of my property at 455. And beyond that, the property becomes private property. It is being maintained beyond private property or beyond the dedicated, you know, dedicated street by the city on the private property. It's being plowed, it's being salted, it's being supplied with the materials to be paved. Those are city resources that can be used to improve the portion of Nicholson Avenue that is dedicated. It's also where, I'm aware, that the individuals that are in charge of repairing the road are also the ones that are benefiting from that city resource. So HERC excavating at the end of the street, they primarily, you know, they've got their landfill or their refuse pile, whatever you want to call it, at the end of the street. So they're either accepting or bringing in trucks. Those trucks come in, do their drop off, and when they leave, the tires are just full of mud. And I'm the first resident along that street on the dedicated area. So I'm the primary recipient of all that mud. It gets packed down, packed, rolled down, pulled down the street, all the way out into Liberty. You can see some of the photos along Liberty. I mean, it goes for an eighth of a mile east and west. If that were to happen anywhere else in this community, people would be up in arms. They'd be screaming, and there'd be action. For years, I've been talking with council members, city service director, trying to see some improvement. And there has been some action. I'll grant that to the community, grant to the state. But it's not comprehensive. It's a Band-Aid approach. And it's not long term. It's nickel and dime. I think that to be fair to the residents of that community, you know, especially the youth that have to walk down that street since there aren't those sidewalks, a more comprehensive, you know, straightforward approach. I'm not saying it needs to be concrete. I'm not saying we have to put in a dedicated base and we've got to pave. But if we are going to put asphalt fines down and do minor improvements, then what we have to do is we have to have enforcement at the ordinances that are there so that once that minor improvement is in place, that it stays and maintains. There's no point in doing any improvement if you're just going to track mud all over the top, you know, over the surface again and again and again. So there's, I could go on and on and on. Years of frustration has been building at this point. So I would ask that everybody, maybe, look what's in the budget, look at the residents that are there, and come up with some game plan, even involving us, that can provide a more permanent solution and hold the offenders on that street accountable. Enforce the maintenance for the ordinances that are on books. It wouldn't fly anywhere else in the community, and I don't think it should fly there. So I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person signed in is Marilyn Bril.
I just have a question.
Sure.
So the materials that the city's providing are being used on Nicholson? Because I'm pretty sure they graded last year and put the fines all the way out to Liberty and fixed the road. They improved the road. The first two loads of fines were delivered. The first place they were used were on Private Drive South. And it was only after continued complaints that additional fines and materials were delivered to then be put out on the actual dedicated street. So if you look at justification and priority, that's a bad example of how city resources should be used.
We've got a lot. I said, we've kind of got some ground to go up here.
Yeah, go ahead.
We got a response to the audience, time if you want.
Okay.
Okay, Marilyn Bril, you are next up. Name and address, please.
My name is Marilyn Bril. I live at 1745 Cooper Foster Park. So good to see you again, John Gabriel.
You as well.
Back to the force, right? Anyway, tonight, my main concern is that several years ago, I was here to address city council and the administration about the need for some stone gravel for the driveways at the Brownhelm Cemetery located at North Ridge and Sunnyside Roads. In the past three years, nothing has been done to correct the deep roots and now the rain-filled crevices in that main driveway. This is where I go every week. The final resting place of my late husband. Why has this been neglected or overlooked? Why are funds lacking at these final resting places? These places should not be, they should be maintained just like our beaches and our other city parks. It's a shame to go there or take family there and step out into a mud puddle. So I feel something should be done. I know that this is not a, what do I want to say? We're not making a lot of money out of Brownhelm Cemetery. There's hardly any places left. So that's a main concern of mine. I also, in closing, I'd like to address a couple of things on the agenda tonight. I hope everybody reads the ordinance as well as I do. At my age, it's like I read them maybe two or three times to understand them. But 2025-27 and 2025-33 seem to be pretty exact verities. And I hope that somebody will explain those to me. We're all talking about a chassis and two different amounts totals. So you'll address that, I'm sure.
Yeah, we, yeah, we will address that coming up when we do the ordinance. Yeah, we'll have them explain that for you.
And I hope everybody adds up what those third readings are going to be. I know that Drew Worley will, he's on top of everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to comment that the street department constantly maintains Brownhelm Cemetery. Now, have they been there since this spring, since the end of the winter? I don't think they've been there yet this year. But they're in there very often, filling those pockets throughout those gravel streets.
Well, there's still runs. And I step out and there's mud or rain. I mean, you have no control over rain, but still. No gravel has been there.
Okay, that's.
Asphalt running.
Yeah, I would kind of have to ask folks if you can give her a call. Like, if we can get your information, I could have plenty of quality to discuss it further. Or under response to the audience, either or. So, Mr. Buckholz, you were signed in, sir?
Yes, sir. Matt Thompson covered my topic, my concerns.
Okay.
So I wanted to call you to comment.
Okay.
Before we waste your time.
No, I appreciate that, thank you. I think that was pretty thorough. Jean Anderson? Name and address, if you will, please.
Of course, thank you, it was good to see you, John.
You as well.
Jean Anderson, 3240 Edgewater Drive. I just want to echo what is being heard at several council meetings in regards to our roads. And Homer Taft had an excellent idea about a road levy fund. And I think that as you are doing your due diligence to restore fees to the utilities that are, bring them back to what they were in '24 before the raises happened. And our voters and residents see that you are concerned about their costs of living in the city, that perhaps that would bode very well for you as you went out to ask for a road levy. And, I mean, a real road levy based on a road plan. And everybody could see what was included in that road plan before they would vote on a levy. But I think as you, as you endeare yourselves to the residents in the community and given the condition of the roads, a really big effort needs to happen. And I think if you did a really big effort, then a maintenance plan going forward will be a lot easier to do and keep the roads maintained from that point on. So I would ask you to really consider that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, and with that, Tony, would you like to, under response to the audience, address that cemetery? Did you feel you covered that enough?
I think I covered it.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Kate. See, I have the long pair of glasses around me. My apologies, I can barely see what I'm.
No, it's okay.
You're going to have to bear, I got some rust in that.
That's right. Well, I have good news to share. So how's that?
Perfect.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. I am Kate Raffela, and I am the Executive Director of Main Street Vermillion, just a little over two years now in this position. And on behalf of our Board of Directors and myself, I wanted to present our 2024 annual report. Since 2001, Main Street has been adding the extras to our community using the four-point approach that our governing body of Main Street America gives us. The four points are economic vitality, promotion, design and preservation, and community collaboration throughout our organization. Every year, we go through a national and state-level accreditation to ensure that we are meeting these goals and remain mission-focused. Throughout our annual report, you can read about our funding, our outreach, and the impact of Main Street Vermillion. We wear a lot of hats throughout our community and consider ourselves the place to go for resources, support, and a lot of times to get your project done. All of that is to say that Main Street Vermillion and our partner programs, at our core, is a quality-of-life organization. Can the city be a city without over 2,000 flowers and 141 hanging baskets? Sure. Can the residents and visitors celebrate the holidays without our community tree lighting and light-up Vermillion celebration? Yes. Would winter be winter on the North Coast without the 16-year ICE Affair tradition that brings thousands out of hibernation and gives our shops and restaurants a much-needed economic boost? Sure. But we believe that it's those projects and so much more make Vermillion Vermillion. So with that, please feel free to reach out to me anytime any city council members would like to learn more. I have also given you an invitation to join us at one of our many events. I am available by phone or email and am right over at 685 Main Street most days. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and we appreciate all those efforts.
If I may, I'm lucky enough to be invited to the monthly Main Street Board meetings. And I can tell you that if Main Street didn't do what it does, we would have to add to our own city hall staff to supplement some of the efforts at grant writing, for one thing. Generation of visitors, work in the, I mean, that's supplemental of what the streets does for decorating and making it ready for, but what Main Street does is really substantial and has an effect on the welfare of the city. So I thank them for doing what they do. And we don't pay, really, very little.
I might change.
And they have cookies. But no, seriously, Main Street is a real asset.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again, we appreciate it. Under correspondence, do we have correspondence this evening?
We do. The first piece of correspondence is dated May 25. This is Dear President Gabriel and council members, please give favorable consideration to Connie Dickel Loughlin to the Parks and Recreation Board. Ms. Loughlin lives on Main Street and will complete the term with John Ross, who is in the outside of the city. Ms. Loughlin's term will end December 3/26. Sincerely, Jim Fortfilder, Mayor. And then we also have a liquor license from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for Jim's Pizza Box Vermillion LLC at 4503 Liberty Avenue. And that's all.
And just to note, we did receive correspondence from Mr. Homer Taft. And they're lengthy, there's great information in there. We will attach those to the minutes for anybody to view. And I recommend everybody take a look at those. And we, I appreciate those suggestions as well. Thanks, sir. Okay, we will be dealing with that in the new business, so moving right along. President Council's report this evening. I really have no report, other than to thank my colleagues here for allowing me to serve with the remainder of this term. And then moving on, we'll move to committee reports, starting with Mr. Lucas. Okay. Historic design and review, planning did not meet since the last report was given. Their next meeting is going to be on the May 14th. Historic design review will meet at 6:00 and planning will meet at 7:00. Stormwater advisory, nobody was held and nothing planned. Finance Committee met on April 14th. There were three topics of interest. One was just a general financial update. The 2026 Tax Budget Resolution, 2025 R-4 was also discussed quite extensively, as well as a review of ordinance 2025-10. You can find all of those meeting minutes on the city website. It was a robust discussion. I think it's something that should be read. And that is the end of, oh, next meeting will be on May 12th, May 12th at 6:00 p.m. And that's the end of my report. Okay, thank you. We had a no-down planning commission meeting, will not be meeting?
Correct, there was no application.
No application, okay. Scratch them. Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember? Okay, moving right along.
Thank you, Council President, Health and Safety Met. And all minutes can be found on the website. Next meeting will be May 12th here in this building at 6:00.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Councilmember? Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Worley.
I have no report for the tree commission. Next meeting will be Tuesday, the 13th at 9:30. First part.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Howe?
Legislative met on April 14th. Review of ordinance 2024-43. There's a lengthy discussion on the food truck ordinance, along with ordinance review of 2023-46. All the findings and conversation of those minutes can be found on the website as well. The next meeting for that will be May 12th in this building at 6:00. Moving on to Parks and Recs, they run on the 15th. A lengthy meeting here. Looks like they were provided $2,000 truck from the Rotary Club to support the Learn to Swim program. They talked about Main Street, Chozy Park Revitalization Transformation Project, Community Pool, and their subcommittee reports. Pickleball courts out on 60 there at Breeze Park. And the next meeting is May 20th in this building at 6:00.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Port Authority met April 17th. They'll be meeting in this Thursday evening at 6:30. They touched on several topics. The minutes, of course, we will put on the site.[1790.88] The minutes, of course, we will put on the site, but just to give you a couple items in there, that their income for the ramp is up this year due to fishing, so we're happy about that, ninety percent. And they also are moving forward on work on their plant terms that you see at McGarvey's Landing. And along with that, they've approved some signage and some imagery, and they've involved Mr. Bowe, who is a local architect, in that. And overall, their, their funding looks really good, they have balances. They are in the minutes if you would like to see it, but yeah, overall, year to year, the port authority is looking very healthy this year. And we appreciate all the out-of-town fishermen who kind of make that happen, of course. I only have Minister of Streets and Buildings, we all report those in, yeah, I'll report those at the next meeting. So we'll move on. Patricia West is not here, the C D's of Councilman Drew, if you will.
Can we go back to the Port Authority, I have a question slash comment, and it may have been the last Port Authority meeting or the one before, I believe there was some discussion about excessive logs, trees in the river.
That was a previous.
Is that the previous?
Previous meeting, yes.
Is, in, in, my understanding is really no one's responsibility, not the city's, we can't, nobody can identify whose responsibility is to remove those.
Technically, it's an act of nature. Now, the debate was once they touch your property or get entangled in your property, are you then responsible for them? And the discussion broke down into a longer discussion that, you know, you have homeowners who are not going to be able to have means remove a forty-to-a-hundred-foot tree from their property. So they kind of wait for nature to, like last night, flush it out again in a way, so. Yeah, at this point, the port, I don't believe has the resources to manage it now, but Thursday night, and hopefully we'll touch on that, but.
Is there an appetite for the city to evaluate funding the removal of these trees? I get a lot of calls, being in work too, Riverside Drive. Of course, I'm also a voter, and just Friday, I watched my neighbor try to maneuver around a big log or big tree just to get into his dock. So I think we gotta do something.
Well, it's okay with this, but it's, the first is, we're gonna have to talk to some people, so it's okay with this body, we can put it on utilities? Or I'm sorry, it would be best, probably finance, because we're about to pay for it. Either, either, or we'll put it on a committee, let me find the right committee for it.
I appreciate that.
And then that way I can, like, contact O D N R and some of the other agencies and see what their thoughts on, as far as responsibility. You know, once you start taking responsibility for all of these things that are really acts of nature, you know, it can get very costly pretty quick, so.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to.
I don't, and I'll discuss with the Port Authority Thursday evening as well, if I have any.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for letting me address that. And then I'll, I'll jump into Utilities. So Utilities met on April fourteenth, we had a good discussion about kind of where the city is at with the EPA. And then that led into a discussion about the rates. And I think the outcome of that was, it's gonna be on tonight's reading, is that we're gonna drop those rates back to last year. So if you guys recall, it was about a forty percent increase this year in the wastewater. So we're gonna drop that back, and in my, it's also my understanding, we're gonna not increase the rates going into 2026. I know there was an email that went out today, or I read it over the weekend, about maybe we didn't go back enough with the cuts. But I do want to remind everyone that the steps that we're taking, or we may take, the passes, is that we're dropping about forty percent off the bill, and we're stopping the rate from going up next year. So to me, it is pretty significant right now, to kind of put a pause on everything. So that was a discussion on Utilities. And then B Z A met, Border Zone Appeals met on April twenty-second, there's four issues, nothing really exciting. You can read the minutes, all four of those issues passed. So that's it.
Any questions? Yeah, if you will.
Just to make comment, we did put the rates review for October on committee. I didn't, but now we will.
To discuss it in October?
Yes, yes.
And I think that's appropriate, because by then, hopefully, we'll have more information about the EPA, and we can have another conversation about it. Thank you.
Thank you. For Councilman Drew, then we'll move on to the Mayor's slash Safety Director, for the Port Authority.
Thank you, Council President, I have two items to report on this evening. One, which may not seem significant, but apparently is, to the residents of the city, Shred Day, is Saturday, May ten. Doesn't sound like that much, but every year, we have over a hundred Vermillionites stop to take advantage of this event. We have judges, clergies, and even a council member or two queues up and comes through to hand off their shreds. The, this is all done courtesy of Lorraine County Solid Waste Management and the Lorraine County Commissioners. Shred Truck will be at the E and R Church on Grand Street downtown, and we ask that you please enter on the Ohio Street entrance so we can keep the traffic flow going through the parking lot. It's, the people at the Solid Waste Truck, who do this all over the county, say that Vermillion is by far the biggest turnout they have of any community that they serve with the, with the shred truck. So I'll be there, the administrative assistant, Jody Booker, will be there. I'll be there at least until I expire from handing all these boxes to those nice guys. And the shred, the stuff is shredded immediately, we don't, doesn't fall into anyone else's hands. You hand it to us, we give it to the guys, it goes in the truck, and it's done. So that's Shred Day. Secondly, I would like to, I would, I'd like to ask Rob Duncan to introduce himself. Mr. Duncan is the Director of the Lorraine County Community Development, is also the former mayor of Norwalk. Mr. Duncan and his group are who we frequently contact for assistance regarding developments in the Lorraine County portion of Vermillion. So, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Council President, Council Administration, thank you for giving me just a couple minutes tonight to come and introduce myself. I've been at some of your meetings, I recognize some of your faces, we've worked on projects. I knew the mayor before, we were both mayors, and then had the opportunity, this last five years in economic development, to work with him on projects here in Vermillion. And this last year, the commissioners have kind of taken a different approach because all of our economic development guys just, the gals just covered all the county. But now they've taken a strategic approach, so I have the upper layers of all the cities along the lake. Seen Chris a couple times here. So Avon, Avon Lake, and I do have one village down in Grafton. But other than that, I have all along the lake, and they just asked me to come and introduce myself, so you can see my face. That could be a good thing or a bad thing, right? So, but if you have any questions on economic development or anything, that I'll still be working with the mayor, but I'm happy to answer any of your questions. And we want to take a little better targeted approach to when different grants and things come available, that we have a better source, one-on-one, we know who our communities are, so we're not missing them when those things come available, try to get them out in a timely manner. But other than that, just wanted to introduce myself, and if you guys have any questions, happy to try to answer them.
I do. Did I hear you correctly to state that your focus is on Lorraine County, or Lorraine County side? Or is it Erie and Lorraine?
No, it's the Lorraine County side.
Just Lorraine?
Yeah, I mean, somewhere crosses over, and we can't help that, but I do want to get involved with your Main Street, she left, so. But, yeah.
But if something tends to bleed into Lorraine, that might be something that you can explore?
Absolutely.
And if you have cards to provide, we'd be grateful.
Yeah.
They all work with the Erie County Economic Development for the Erie County portion of, which performs a similar, similar role to what the Lorraine County Community Development does. But they, you're right, they both tend to, you know, if there's something on the borderline, nobody's.
Okay. But we work very well with Erie County as well, a lot of projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Lastly, I request an executive session to include the Law Director and the Finance Director to discuss matters pending litigation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, any questions for the Mayor this evening? Okay, moving on to the Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Dirt Patcher is ready to make its annual appearance soon, as soon as the weather permits. As always, the highly-traveled streets in town will be the first on the list for repairs before moving into the individual neighborhoods. During the stretch of rainy weather, crews have been busy panning out several ditches, including catch bases of debris to eliminate stormwater backups. Last week, I spoke with our salesman from Rush Truck to try to get some additional information on not only tariff charges, but also future costs associated with the purchase of trucks for the distribution and the street departments. As previously stated, a $3,900 tariff charge has already been added to the price of the two trucks. That fee is not going away, but with the ninety-day pause in tariffs, our salesman feels that there will be no further tariff charges, but he couldn't absolutely guarantee it either. He said, however, that he could guarantee that the price will not get any lower. He also stated that by 2027, all engine manufacturers for large commercial trucks will be making changes to their engines to improve emissions, which conservatively will add at least $10,000 per unit. He stated that this will be an industry-wide standard and that these additional costs will be added to the late 2026 orders. With that said, I urge Council to consider passing ordinances 2025, 26, 27, and 28 this evening, and to also consider suspending rules and passing ordinance 2025-dash-33 by emergency for a new plow truck. This equipment is vital to the employees in order to efficiently maintain the city's infrastructure. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the Service Director this evening? Okay. Moving right along, we'll, Finance Director.
Thank you. My report will start this evening with appropriation updates, and some of these are repeats from prior meetings, getting to the second reading here. We have, based on the most recent meeting though, established a Department Code of 1405 for Grant Administrative Services, and increased the general budget, general fund budget by $50,000 to correspond with that conversation. Also, a transfer from the General Fund of $50,000 to Fund 235, which is a new fund, which will be the Senior Activity Fund, as per the actions of last meeting. And also, an increase of revenue and expenditures in Fund 235 of $50,000 to represent that transfer. Also, based on discussion, increase to transfer Fund 415, Sewer Capital, $700,000 to offset potential loss of revenue for utility rate reductions. And Fund 411 is getting an increase of revenue and expenditures for $4,285 for Erie Shores and Islands Grant. Also, revenue and expenditure increase, $700,000 to Fund 415. And Fund 602, an increase in the budget there of $450,000 to meet the first payment from OWDA loan principal payment for July first. Fund 235 is established for senior activities, and 1405 for grant services within the General Fund. Also, a comment on the Ordinance 2025-30 of the transfer of $500,000 to the Streets Fund to replace lost revenue. Mr. Taft had mentioned to increase that to $600,000, and I agree with that. The original $500,000 had been when we had talked about making that ordinance change effective thirty days from when the action was taken, but in fact, it went back to January first when the ordinance was enacted. So that would be a $600,000 net loss there. And I think that those monies from the forgiveness were going to the Streets Fund, always have been. I think we're naming semantics or shell game here if we're trying to say that streets were not affected by that. So I don't see a reason to change that language in those ordinance. If that money, if that money's being replaced from somewhere and going into streets, that obviously follows that that's where that money had been going for a long time. OWDA loan update, this came in just after our April fourteenth meeting. We received official extension from U S E P A for the wastewater plant. It's safe to say that we are entering repayment now on the planning and design loans, and it can still be rolled into the next phase, construction phase, or et cetera, when that happens. But in the meantime, the original terms of the loan are now enacted with that extension, and the payments will start beginning July one at $450,000, and that will come from Fund 602, the Sewer Fund. The regular payment schedule will be twice annually, January, $450,000, as well as July. The outstanding principal on that loan right now, the OWDA planning loan, is $2.9 million. We can continue to draw on that as that phase of the project moves forward. So we will now be going into that repayment stage. And the administration has repeatedly cautioned about changing the collection rates for the utilities because of that debt service that was going to need to be covered. So I want Council to be very mindful of that as they approach taking action on adjustments of rates, because maintaining that debt service, as well as the unknown capital cost to move forward to maintain our wastewater infrastructure in compliance, as well as the cost, or possible, possible cost to connect to a cooperative venture, will cost far more than the cash in hand. Consider carefully when voting on Ordinance 2025-10 and 2025-34 on this evening's agenda as we work towards those goals. The city's cash flow can't take this hit, let alone the endless list of streets with the funding already reduced and having to be replaced from elsewhere, water lines and other capital needs, along with the growing operating costs that are always a part of the, part of the equation. And while, I'm not sure we should be rushing because the EPA plans could very easily be developed, the target date that was last mentioned was December. And it would be an easy solution for me to say it's not my problem. Leave it to the next administration to handle, but that's not what leaders do. And I've worked too hard, along with this administrative team and Council, to establish financial health in the city and to sit quietly while that may be coming undone. And I'm also a member of the community who cares very much as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
First of all, I, I want to say you've done an amazing job, so hats off to you. With all that being said, where are we at then if we were approved the purchase of these two trucks? Like, what I, what I hear is, we do all this, we're gonna be in a hole. But then at the same time, Tony's asking for two trucks.
And we had, that was part of that initial plan that the administration brought forward earlier in the year, was to purchase those two trucks, one for the distribution and the other one for streets. Those are capital expenditures that are very much needed due to the efficiency and the safety of our workers, as well as getting things done on a productive basis. Those are the costs of doing business. And to say that those might last another, what we have a lot, last ten years or twenty years till we get all of this paid off is probably not realistic, it's not realistic.
If Council were to approve the, the dump truck, where would that put us financially?
That would be a part of the $2 million plan that the administration had presented earlier. Any of those things that are a part of that plan will leave eighteen months of cash, operating cash, based on current expenses, to the next administration in January.
One last question, to, to bring up Mr. Taft's, I think his argument or his point is, for the, at least for the dump truck to pull it out of the, the water pump?
We can then fund that through, that was originally part of that General Fund plan. So what could happen with that, and the outcome would be the same, is we could have Council approve a transfer of those funds from the General Fund into the Streets Fund or the Water Fund distribution to cover that.
What does that leave, what would that fund look like then for the rest of the year? Enrollment next year, would we be short?
Four.
If we pulled it out of the water pump?
Yes.
Significantly? Significantly?
Depends on what else happens this year.
But then we could also then just transfer back from the general fund.
But you would have additional potential impacts of the general fund, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
So with all due respect, I like what he says. I think he did a pretty good job of keeping us, you know, financially in, in the know, in the, in between the lines. I understand that that money you're saying is vital to the city, but the same money is vital to the people trying to buy bread every day. So if it's over, don't disrespect to you, Tony, but if your guys gotta drive around an older truck for a couple more years to pay half that four hundred thousand in July, and they can still buy bread, I'm cool with it.
That's something enough to you.
Yeah, we'll put bigger sideboards on the box, buy them a new dump box, and we keep rolling it. We can go out tomorrow and buy a new, a new truck for the city, an older truck, hand them to make things easier on them for a fraction of the cost. And it could be a nineties model, an early two thousands model. Guys are making hundreds of thousands of dollars driving millions of miles across this country every day in older pieces of equipment. And I don't think that it's fiscally, financially responsible for us to go out and spend that kind of money if you're saying what you're saying about putting us in danger. If that two million is that vital to the city's operation, then we probably need to scrap that two million dollar plan and start looking other ways to spend that money. That would be my opinion.
Please, we're not at a baseball game.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna pick on things too much. It, it sounds like you're okay with spending the money as long as it's for your guys' plan. I fully understand that you had a game plan, you want to stick to that. I don't recall anyone on council wanting to rush to spend a whole bunch of this money. It's one thing I said is to slow down all this. I don't, I don't want to go into the trucks because they'll come up here later, I'm sure. But there was one thing I saw in the expense report. I just had a question about it, I forgot about it. I don't know if someone reached out to you before. Did I see that we spent over four thousand dollars on a road survey or traffic study for Vermillion Landing? It's on there as expensive.
We had, we had a contract for that. I can't remember the exact amount.
Yeah, it's just over four thousand dollars. I'm just curious, I'm completely ignorant of that. I have no idea how that stuff works. Is that something that we do and they reimburse us? Or do we just put the bill and do a study for them? Like, why, why do we do that study?
Was that the third-party study?
Yeah, it was a company that served with it.
I think it was. It was, it was a third-party that was reviewing the traffic impact study. So they buy developers.
Yeah, if the developer is claiming that they want to do certain things with the traffic and all, then we just want to take their word for it. We want to have our own study so that the city can have its own point of view.
Gotcha. Again, I'm completely ignorant, I didn't understand how that worked. That just jumped out to me, someone asked about it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Well, the only thing, you know, I'm, this is my first meeting. There's a lot going on here, obviously. But I will say, I've been here in times where we were using signs to put floors in trucks. And man, when times are good, you may want to think about getting some trucks because it's gonna be a long time when time flips. In 2008, we sat here and it flipped. And we went a couple decades without being able to do anything. We even had to borrow money to make a payroll. So I'm just saying, sometimes if you have the capital, it's not a bad idea to get a couple pieces of equipment that you can rely on. Because, you know, if you're counting on this, but I'm looking at these numbers and I'm kind of jealous because I've served, this is the most money I've ever seen. So that would be my only caution. As a business, I kind of operate the same way. By money, I try and get my stuff up to speed because in, in our industry, we're the first to go when things get tough, and things are starting to get tough. So I'm just saying, just keep that in mind. I'm not asking about one way or the other, just bear that in mind. And with that, we'll move on to the City Engineers Report. Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to give council a quick update on the building project. Contractors working on Delamere Road this week, weather permitting. In addition, the contractors working on regrading and cleaning up the streets west of Delamere. Today, we know to start season. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the engineer? Thank you, Mr. Howard. Moving on, we have the law director to report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also echo that welcome back. It's a pleasure to see you back behind on your chair. Other than that, I will reserve my report for the executive session.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll do that at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Any questions or comments for the law director at this time? All right. That concludes those reports. For the administration, we don't have anything on our old business, on our new business, we have several items to consider. And I'm gonna shuffle these for a minute. We're gonna add a motion, as the mayor discussed tonight, I would like to add a motion on our new business to give favorable consideration of Kai Dickel-Lofflin as our new parks and rep. Will somebody entertain that?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Drew?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Worley?
Present.
Al?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
And also, on our new business, we have a motion to untable a third reading of 25-10. Can we entertain a motion to untable that?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Drew, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, any discussion on that, Drew?
Yeah, I just, when we talk about this, I can't remember if it was the last time or if it was when, but, you know, Councilman Drew wanted to add the, I think it was take fifty thousand dollars away from the one account and set up the new Senior Citizen Activity Fund. I highly suggest that we separate those ordinances completely, do them two separate things. And then another thing, so we made a motion to untable this. We vote onto untable it, and later we go to vote for this. If we end up voting on this, we're gonna vote to move fifty thousand dollars into a fund that doesn't exist yet. That, that fund is up for first reading to establish that fund. So I would suggest that council votes this down or votes to table it again, whatever you guys want to do. I think we should separate these things as two completely separate things. One for the seven hundred thousand, or whatever that number is now, and fifty thousand for the Senior Citizen Fund, completely separate.
I, to echo your point, I was gonna ask that we deal with ordinance 32 first because you gotta establish the fund, in my eyes, before we could. And then there's probably some discussion to talk about if we're gonna transfer the rest of that money into, into that fund. Now, can we amend this and just completely exclude that and just deal with the senior service issue or the senior fund, funding? I think we probably could. So that's sort of my position at this point, is I would ask that when we do read the ordinances, if we could address ordinance 32 first. And then if that passes, then we can have a probably healthy discussion about transferring money as identified in ordinance 10.
Okay, and excuse me just for, I'm sorry, Councilman Drew, I apologize. I had just.
Sure.
I was just jumping for it.
Sure.
Would you just reiterate the, your portion on the seven hundred thousand?
No, when we talked about this before, it was the administration wanted us to move X amount of money to the one fund. Then, amongst conversations, we wanted to separate fifty thousand dollars for the Senior Citizen Activity Fund. I just suggest to council that we completely separate those two issues. They should not be together, in my opinion.
Okay. And I agree with that. Any other comments?
We just, I would just suggest keeping that table then, at this point, with 510.
And then just prepare another, I just need direction to amend that ordinance.
Can we make a motion to amend ordinance 25-10 to remove the fifty thousand dollar transfer from that?
Well, or we just remove the seven hundred thousand dollar transfer. Well, I think there's some, some, probably needs to have some discussion if that's, if that needs to happen, or if it's the appropriate thing to happen at this time.
Transfer, especially if we're talking about rolling back the collection of money to help pay for the EPA loan or all of the, what we got here, OWDA loan? OWDA loan. We're gonna roll that money back, and then we're gonna defer or wait on bringing money out of the general fund to help with it. I mean, we're putting a lot of holes in a financial boat. But I may not be here to feed sync, and Finance Director might not, but a future council or a future administration will. I think keeping that discussion alive about bringing money out of the general fund into the, to somehow help feed this, this loan application that's developing before our eyes since the last council meeting. I mean, leadership is not just doing the things that, you know, feel good and make people happy. Sometimes we have to do the hard things. And I think moving that money out into the, help fund the loan is, is critical at this point, particularly if we're taking away other resources.
Yeah, I don't recall anybody saying anything about not moving that money, really.
So.
But we're gonna separate it with the senior thing and leave it.
Well, I guess my suggestion was we remove the fifty thousand from this particular ordinance, and then we can amend the Senior Citizen ordinance and add it there or add it at a separate time.
The Senior Citizen add it later time?
Yeah, separate the two things. These two things really are not related. It's probably on the same piece of paper.
Just long as we don't leave that.
Right. My, my hope was that to get the seven hundred thousand done, and then we can deal with the Senior Citizen portion, which obviously isn't a five alarm fire, right?
Right. Yeah, and I'm, I'm not opposed to transferring money to help offset the wastewater treatment plant. But he means, my, my only concern, and I just want to have a discussion about it, was it came up last meeting. Once we transfer money into a fund, we can't transfer it back out, is my understanding.
That's correct, but if you're reducing the utility rates, as you've mentioned, that difference is, would exceed seven hundred thousand dollars. So the money for those payments is gonna have to come from somewhere.
Sure.
And continuing with the project of compliance.
And I just wanted some clarification. In the event that we needed to transfer back out, I mean, obviously, it's, it's gonna get, it's gonna go towards a payment before we even think about transferring back out, most likely. So, okay.
If I may, I'd like to finish my point before I was interrupted. I, I understand where you guys are coming from. You know, especially the left-handies know what the right-hand is doing, but nobody up here is in a rush to spend money. So we're not doing away with that seven hundred thousand anywhere else. No one here mentioned anything about not moving it that way. I just think that we should split this, but no one up here said anything about a big rush to spend all this money. I understand, you guys want to control it, you want to move it. You've worked hard for years to get us set up to where we are. No one here is in a rush to go expend that money. So I don't think we have to worry about that stuff. Thank you.
I think we have, we have a first and a second.
We have a motion to untable the third reading of 2025-10. We have a move, we moved, gave her a second. So if you don't want to untable it, then you need to withdraw your motion.
Yeah, I think, I think let's leave it. My opinion was leave it tabled. I'll withdraw my motion, and we'll have a discussion.
Do you want to go to committee then?
Yeah, the Finance.
Yep.
Finance Committee? All right.
If I may, I would like to make a motion that we ask the clerk to split those.
Split the three.
Yeah, leave 10 how it is, just remove the Senior Citizen Activity Fund and then make it its own.
I'll second that.
I have a question. We have another ordinance to establish the Senior Citizens Fund. Do we want to table that, or do we want to just amend this one?
No, I would check that, that though, because we gotta establish that fund first. So this, this works out perfect. We can have a first reading. I don't know if there's an emergency clause. I don't think there's necessarily a need for emergency clause for that. We'll just let it run, run its course. We'll establish the fund. And then if council agrees to transfer some money in there, then the fund's there.
Drew, do you want to make that official motion?
I make that motion.
I second.
I think you already did.
I'll bet Danny deliver it, John.
Any more discussion there?
Any doubt, we all do? Please call the rule.
Wes, is that here?
Drew?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So also, under our new business, we have a motion, well, this is a motion, we're gonna do this at the end of the meeting, but we will turn into executive session for the purpose of pending legal action at the end of this meeting. Should we vote that motion right now?
Yeah, you can do it.
Okay, then I'll move that we move into executive session to discuss legal matters.
Second.
Please call the rule.
Any discussion?
Oh, is there any discussion? We really can't talk about it now, but go ahead.
Holmes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then we need a motion to authorize the administration to go out to bid for the 2025 road program.
So moved.
Second. Discussion on that?
What, go ahead. What, what program? What, what streets? These are two I'm waiting for?
Yes, this is not a poll, Mark.
All right.
This is proof last year.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, please call the rule.
Holmes?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the reading of the ordinances. Ordinance 25-10 is still tabled, so we'll continue from there. Susan, if you will, please.
Sure. Third reading, ordinance 2025-15. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Vermillion, Ohio to enter into a contract on behalf of said city, the township of Brown Hill, Orion County, Ohio, to provide fire protection for the period of July 1, 2025, and June 30, 2026.
Can we have a motion to adopt ordinance 25-15?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Please call the rule.
Worley?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Please continue.
Third reading, ordinance 2025-19. An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Vermillion High by ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Can we have a motion to adopt ordinance 25-19 declaring an emergency?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? Drew?
Yeah, I don't see any reason to hold this up, but I also can't, for the life of me, think of any reason why this needs to be an emergency. Could you help me with that?
The replacement pages are already in effect from last year. It's, our company, American Legal Publishing, does the replacements. They're already online, so they just, they are the ones that repair this legislation and send it to us.
So there's, there's no real emergency then?
No, it's already, I mean, it's already in effect, the ordinances were passed, so you don't have to do emergency. They just rub it that way, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other? Please call the roll.
Drew?
Sure.
Worley?
No.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
How?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Please continue.
Third reading ordinance twenty-two-five-twenty-two. An ordinance to officially supplement the minimum contractual services to be performed by Graham Hall Engineering and Surveying Company by virtue of ordinance twenty-eighteen-five adopted January second, twenty-eighteen, by authorizing professional engineering and surveying services related to the OPWC-funded Haley Street reconstruction project, prescribing that the firm shall be paid for additional services in accordance with the rate schedule set forth in the proposal dated January third, twenty-eighteen, in a total amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars.
Entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five-dash-twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion about that? Okay, so this is Haley Street, right? Please call the roll.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Please continue.
Third reading ordinance twenty-two-five-twenty-three. An ordinance to officially supplement the minimum contractual services to be performed by Graham Hall Engineering and Surveying Company by virtue of ordinance twenty-eighteen-five adopted January second, twenty-eighteen, by authorizing professional engineering and surveying services related to the Pineview Drive reconstruction project, prescribing that the firm shall be paid for additional services in accordance with the rate schedule set forth in the proposal dated January third, twenty-eighteen, in a total amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand, five hundred dollars and declaring an emergency.
Okay, can we entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-three declaring an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm just curious what the emergency is.
You got one of the ordinance? She's gonna want to read it, you're up there in front of you.
Ordinance twenty-two-four.
I believe it's to start the project, get going on the project, timing for this season, I believe.
Yeah, the quicker it gets passed, the quicker we can go out to bid.
Yeah, it says the emergency necessity being that the project can be designed for possible construction in the summer season.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Drew?
Yes.
How?
Yeah.
Holmes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Please continue.
Third reading ordinance twenty-two-five-twenty-four. An ordinance to officially supplement the minimum contractual services to be performed by Graham Hall Engineering and Surveying Company by virtue of ordinance twenty-eighteen-five adopted January second, twenty-eighteen, by authorizing professional engineering and surveying services related to the Brown Hill Station Road reconstruction project, prescribing that the firm shall be paid for additional services in accordance with the rate schedule set forth in the proposal due January third, twenty-eighteen, in a total amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars and declaring an emergency.
Okay, can we entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-four declaring an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm not gonna ask the emergency again, I'm filling up the answers, but I just want to clarify again, these designs will be good for some time.
Right.
Correct, okay. Because I, I'll be honest, I don't want to approve work on Brown Hill until I know what's going on out there as far as the development stuff goes. It doesn't make sense to me to put in a brand-new road and then have a bunch of heavy machinery over it. So I just want to make sure that the designs will be good for some time. Thank you. Any other?
If I recall correctly, council asked for both of these designs to be done for a future option to decide what to do, if anything, with either of them. And the emergency being that if you want to do anything with either of them, I mean, we've gotta be moving already. If you want to get it done this year, you may not. You may choose not to do Brown Hill, but we've gotta press, pedal the metal on this thing already.
So, and I brought this concern before. I'm gonna ask the finance director for her advice. Do you honestly think the city has the funding to do both of these streets?
It was currently in the street fund, yes.
With everything else that we have going on with Nautical, the other street, Haley, I mean, Haley's gonna be a lot of grant money, but.
These were, these two projects, one, those were ones that you were going to select to do from the transfer from the general fund.
Right. This is part of that brilliant PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, and I remember that. I just, I just want to make sure before we spend a hundred thousand dollars to design something that, that's not gonna be built, that we're just not throwing, throwing away money. So if you guys are saying that the projection looks like we can afford to do both of them, then I support it.
As we said back then, we have money from general fund that could be moved to do one of these other, one of the other of these two streets. Council said, could you please do a study on both of them, do a plan on both of them, so we take a look at it and see what we want to do. So this is part of helping inform you to make that decision.
You have the money to do the design work for both. You're only going to have the money to do one.
So, yeah, maybe I should have been more clear. We have the money to fix and actually do the construction for both. Because I don't need to spend a hundred thousand dollars.
It was, it was one or the other.
To... I, it just, I don't know. I'm not comfortable spending a hundred thousand dollars on something that, it's just gonna sit in a file cabinet for four or five years until we get funding.
If you would rather just, you know, go ahead with the design for Pineview and leave the one off of Brown Hill and with the suggestion, maybe you look favorably on moving that money out of the general fund to Pineview, that's, that's doable.
It's just my thought. I mean, there's seven of us up here, six tonight, but it's just my thought. Well, as we all know, both roads are in current condition. And both, again, feed a lot of residents. My concern is, yeah, you know, if we eventually, I mean, this road does get done, that section between Vermillion and High Bridge, I don't, if, or when the development goes in, if we keep the trucks off that, we can arrange the route that those trucks come in at an hour. Correct?
Correct.
Correct. So we gotta make sure that that, that happens if Brown Hill is getting done. I believe it's, it's, I understand the concern, but, you know, whether we're pulling money or we're taxing more people because we're gonna run a street levy and then we're gonna hit them with the school levy and then we're gonna give them their half percent back, then we're gonna do the road tax levy, so we're gonna take that half percent right back. This road's gotta get done, okay? So, I'm gonna go yes. I'm, I'm, I'm the riffle.
Okay, any other discussion? If I get to vote, please.
Drew's got one.
Yeah, just, it's been reserved, you know, the majority of that conversation was, you know, we had a lot of conversation about the roads and we pretty much landed on Pineview and then it seemed to me that Brown Hill kinda got slid in there at the last second. And I was like, that's why I asked that question back then, how long is this good for? Because I knew that we wouldn't have the money to do that, to do both of those projects. I'm, I'm with you if you don't want to spend the hundred grand. I was gonna vote no anyways because it's emergency for zero reason, in my opinion. But that's just where I stand on that.
Well, yeah. So this, just to reiterate again, I want to make sure I'm hearing everything clearly, you know? Kind of new, new ground. This will not be, there's no money to do the actual paving? I mean, there's no grant waiting on this or anything? This is just straight design engineering?
There's no money to do one road, either Pineview or Brown Hill Station.
Okay.
And you've asked to have us do a plan for both of them, so you can inform yourselves about what decision to make.
But there is an estimate for both. Not in the minutes, there was an estimate for both. What's within that, by money?
Right. For construction. But only one can be constructed with the general fund surplus money.
Okay, may I ask one more question? Okay. So the finance director, what would, if we didn't do anything as far as increasing the money that would be allocated to funding for the roads next year? What would, what would our road funding look like next year?
When you say we don't do anything?
Like, we didn't, obviously, we don't do a tax levy. We, obviously, we're gonna pass, if we pass the, uh, the ordinance to, well, we already passed the income tax.
Yeah.
Obviously, there's no, there's no more money going into the road fund, right? At this point?
Correct.
Right? So what does that look like next year?
At this point, next year would be really looking at, the tax budget numbers are pretty close on that one.
One point two? One billion, one hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred seventy-nine? Is your estimated resources for twenty-six on the tax budget?
And the expenditures are about?
Yeah.
So you'd have, you'd have that, that current number, yours revenue only the million one?
And it's already accounted for, right? Is that what I heard?
As far as accounted?
It's already accounted for, that?
As far as a commitment for what's going to happen with it?
Yes.
No.
Well, that's what I thought. Just to alert the council.
It's showing as available, the revenue, expenditures both on.
So we would have a million dollars next year? And we also could allocate other money from the general fund that we're getting from the real estate tax increase into that next year as well? So we could have one point four million potentially, whatever we choose.
But you're gonna have to put in six-ten, six-fifty to bring it to the level that it was prior to changing the forgiveness.
Plus, we already have some of it allocated for Haley Street, which will be next year, right off the bat. Trying to determine if it's appropriate, if it's the best use of our money today to get the engineering done. So it's one less, it's a cost we don't have to absorb when we're ready to pave the street. And that's where I'm trying to get to.
Okay, well. Let's go ahead and, please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, please continue.
Third reading ordinance twenty-two-five-twenty-six. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Vermillion, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Henderson Products Inc. of U.Sires, Ohio, for the snow and ice package for the Vermillion Street Department truck through the Sourcehole purchasing program. Authorizing the finance directors to make payment in an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-eight thousand, forty-four dollars and declaring an emergency.
Okay, can we entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five-dash-twenty-six declaring an emergency?
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion? Go ahead.
And the emergency is?
The sooner we get the trucks, the sooner, sooner we can use them on the street.
Thank you.
This is for the dump truck?
No, this one is for the outfit for the salt truck.
So this ordinance is just to outfit the salt truck?
This is the outfit for the salt.
That we have in?
That's correct.
Past, so we should probably not talk about outfitting something that?
We don't have.
We don't, we haven't voted to purchase yet.
Right.
I mean, I, so that's, that's what I have at ordinance twenty-two-five-thirty-three. Is the purchase of the salt truck.
Because technically, it was twenty-two-five-twenty-five and that went down.
It went down.
And it came back on as a different number, that's why it's thirty-three.
Right.
Does anybody want to rescind their motion?
Withdraw and then go back to it if you want.
Right.
That would be Lucas.
I would, I'd withdraw that. Okay.
I'll make a motion to table that and if we can go back to it this evening, table motion twenty-six, or ordinance twenty-five-twenty-six. We need to do that or can we just skip it?
We just go back.
We can go back, right?
We can just skip it.
Please continue.
Third reading ordinance twenty-two-five-twenty-seven. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Vermillion, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Rush Truck Centers of Cincinnati, Ohio, for the new international truck chassis for the Vermillion Distribution Department through the Sourcehole purchasing program. Authorizing the finance director to make payment in an amount not to exceed one hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents and declaring an emergency.
Can we entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five-dash-twenty-seven declaring an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
And this is the dump truck? This one's the dump truck? This isn't the salt truck, right?
That's right, this is the, the truck chassis.
The chassis for the dump truck?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're okay with that? Uh, you got one right here.
Drew?
I'm just curious what the emergency is.
The sooner we order it, the sooner we get it.
Thank you.
It may, may prevent further tariffs, correct, right? Would be a concern?
Well.
We wait, we don't?
I can't, I don't, I don't know. It's like they said, they don't feel there's gonna be any more tariffs, but they can't guarantee it. But we know how long we've waited for trucks. Of course, they say they're building them faster now, so six months.
How do I talk to Tony last week? Did you have a chance to check the frame and stuff on this and the option of maybe just buying a new box for it?
We did. I, I had the mechanic do that. He looked at the frame. The frame on this truck is a, it's a twenty-seven-year-old truck. It's a nineteen ninety-eight. The frame is a, it's not a single piece of steel. It's two pieces of steel together to make a frame. They used, instead of doing one thick roll, they did two thin ones. With that being done, I spoke with Henderson, actually, and they said that with the truck being over twenty years old and with it being a double steel-coiled frame, that there would be no way that they would attach that, a new bed to that because the, the, the two pieces that create the frame are starting to split and rust.
So if you had to pick one out of both of the setups, which one would it be?
I mean, I think in the long run, you know, we need them both. I mean, it's hard for me to pick one. I mean, the distribution truck, like I said, it's, it's twenty-seven years old. Yes, it runs. It doesn't have a lot of miles on it. The engine's good. It's the body, it's the, it's the, the dump bed, it's small. It efficiency, as I've stated before, you know, you've got a lot more downtime for the guys running back and forth to the shop. You've got people that are out of water longer because they're back and forth to the shop. And, and a bed that's failing. And a frame that's on its way out.
Go ahead.
So this truck's obviously going to replace that truck you're talking about?
Yes.
The other truck, is that replacing something or adding to those?
We are putting aside a, a twenty-two-year-old truck, number eighteen, which was on our salt fleet.
In better shape than this one is? About the same. It's a twenty-plus-year-old north of Ohio.
No, the salt trucks are always worse.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
How?
No.
Lucas?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
Drew?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
It goes into effect in thirty days.
Please continue.
Third reading ordinance twenty-two-five-twenty-eight. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Vermillion, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Concord Road Equipment Manufacturing in Mender, Ohio, for the dump body package for, for the Vermillion Distribution Department truck. Authorizing the finance director to make payment in an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty dollars and seventy cents and declaring an emergency.
Okay, can we entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five-dash-twenty-eight declaring an emergency? So moved. I'll second. Any discussion?
We need the emergency since the other, the truck's not gonna be ordered for thirty days. It doesn't matter, I guess they can order the box.
It's gonna be six months, right?
You can, you can order the?
Yes, it'll be passed. I mean, you'll have an object passing. Or you can say it's passed.
Yes.
Well, it's a referendum.
Wow, if somebody wants a referendum on a dump truck.
I'm just saying you can't really order it until the thirty days comes.
I would, I wouldn't order it until thirty days.
Okay.
Can we just remove the emergency clause?
Go ahead.
I mean, the ordinance is as written.
Right.
You get to amend the ordinance.
Right.
That's motion number four to adopt it.
Call the roll.
Drew?
Yes.
Yes.
How?
No.
Orley?
No.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Mush and Carrie will go into effect in thirty days.
Please continue. Oh, I'm sorry. So we, uh, move back to twenty six. Right. Go back to, um?
No, thirty, we have to get past thirty.
Gotcha. So this will be a second reading of ordinance twenty five dash thirty, please continue.
Second reading ordinance twenty twenty five thirty. An ordinance transferring funds from one appropriation to another and/or appropriating funds not here too far appropriated.
That will go to a third reading, please continue.
First reading ordinance twenty twenty five thirty one. An ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty five six, adopted in March third, twenty twenty five, to make appropriations for current expenditures and to amend the twenty twenty five certificate of estimated resources for the city of Vermillion, Ohio.
Okay, that will also go to a second reading, please continue.
First reading ordinance twenty twenty five thirty two. An ordinance establishing fund two thirty five senior citizens' activity fund.
That will go to a second reading, we'll also put that on financial discussion, please continue.
First reading ordinance twenty twenty five thirty three. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Vermillion, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Rush Truck Centers of Cincinnati, Ohio, for the new international truck chassis for the Vermillion Street Department through the Sourceful State Purchasing Program. Authorizing the finance director to make payment in amount not exceeding one hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred sixty six dollars and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance twenty five dash thirty three, removing the emergency clause. Second. Any discussion?
Drew, Drew.
Drew?
Can we go back to the discussion, I'm sorry.
Uh, go ahead.
Since, no, just go to jet. Uh, what's your thought process to give it, give it a second reading and a third reading to, this is the one in the, the salt truck, we were proceeding with this.
Right, I just want to send it to a more committee. To, well, either, okay, then let's do that. Well.
Do first reading, go back to a second reading then, is that how you want it to go?
Yes.
Go through the reading?
Let's keep going through the reading. Okay, that will go to a second reading.
Do you want to remove the, or?
I'll, I'll draw my motion, yes.
Drew?
Yes.
And we're doing that to a, uh, finance committee?
Yes.
Twenty five dash thirty three, so please continue.
Want to table that?
The table, okay, I'm sorry. So then we will need a motion to table ordinance twenty, twenty five dash twenty six. So moved. I have a second. Any discussion on that? Please call the roll.
How?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Orley?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Okay. So please continue, we'll start off with that twenty five dash thirty four.
First reading ordinance twenty twenty five thirty four. An ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty three forty six, adopted July twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, and replacing section one zero four four point zero four C, section one of the codified ordinances of the city of Vermillion, to establish new wastewater sewer rates and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'd like to second that.
Holmes?
Uh, yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Orley?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Mush and Carrie.
So then I have a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt twenty five thirty four by emergency.
Second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
So. I guess I'm, I'm torn with all this because you told us earlier that like, we're doing, we need to like take real consideration over this, because it's going to put us in a bind and everything else. But we just, quick numbers, I mean, a couple, almost four hundred thousand dollars in trucks that we could get by with. And that wasn't, we didn't bat an eye at it, we threw them on there on a two million dollar project that he, that, that was presented to us. And I have faith in what you guys do. And Amy, I, I, I think your track record, what you did with the school, and what you've done with the city, has been commendable and respectable. But I don't understand how we can make purchases like this and off the cuff, no questions asked, the money's there, yet when we're talking about the people of this town that make up this community, that eat here, live here, breathe here, are struggling. And we're all struggling, I get that, but to, to, to caution us on this, and, and what I portray as frivolous spending on these trucks. I've, I've been in the, in the industry of construction and what these guys do, I respect the hell out of what they do, crawling in these ditches and down in these holes, and everything else. But I'm telling you, people make a living every single day with the same older used equipment, and we can do it too. I'm, I'm a firm believer in that. I can find you a tandem axle dump truck with an aluminum body tomorrow for under fifty thousand bucks, it'll run the next fifteen years. And if it doesn't, I'll kiss your ass and give you a half hour drop cry, guaranteed, because it happens all the time. And. I respect you standing up for your guys and doing this and trying to get them the tools that they need or that they want to do this job. I don't want to sit in a plow truck all night long, I've done that too. It, it sucks, but, but to, to tell us to caution ourselves on giving relief to the people and still spend almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it, it doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
I'd like to respond to that. The trucks are more of a finite fixed cost, a one-time type of a cost. We have so many unknowns with where that wastewater project is going to go, and, um, the fact that we have ongoing expenses just to figure out what that's, what that's going to be. And my reluctance is based on, I want us to be able to do all the right things for the community. I don't want it to be a situation where we're, it becomes almost like a boomerang effect that we have to make a bigger increase in a, in a year. And not that these prices are good or that I feel good about them. Those, those are my concerns, that it, it's, it's more of an unknown when you start modifying the rates and, and that type of thing, and then potentially an unknown of what are we going to do in January, that type of thing. I have concerns about us being able to meet that compliance. And, and that's the other part that isn't good for people either.
The issue before is it's thirty four right now, as I recall.
Yes.
Everything we are doing tonight, and every night, serves the people in one way or another. I mean, whether it's salting their roads or fixing their broken water mazes, or in this case, fixing a wastewater plant so they can flush their toilet. It's not like we're doing this for ourselves. And if you look at the dates of some of these things, we're looking at trucks that are twenty seven years old and a plant that hasn't been seriously readdressed since the Browns were in the playoff in nineteen sixty two. I mean, all of this has been kicked down the road, so to continue to kick it down the road does not help our people at any means. I mean, it's, I'm sorry that it's all here, but we have a once in a, once in probably a generation overage in the, uh, uh, general fund, thanks to some good financial management.
Sure.
And I say we use it to get at some of these things that have been postponed for a while, everything here is for the people.
Well, the trucks haven't been postponed because we just bought a salt truck.
Well, then we're talking about thirty four, right?
Yeah, I understand, and I'm using everything that we've talked about tonight in regards to this, so I make a conscious decision based off what the finance director said earlier about cautioning us on this thirty four. My point to this is the money that we just put on the table for the trucks could pay the payment in July. So which way are we going to do it for the people is what I'm saying. Are we going to buy trucks to add to the fleet to salt one or two extra roads more an hour? Or are we going to put food on people's table? That's what I'm talking about, Mr. Harrow.
Yeah, well, okay, yeah, we, we are, would, okay, do you want to take the calls in when people say, well, you didn't get our roads fixed, or we didn't get our salt done? I mean, it all comes out of the same place, everything ends up working for the people. It's, yeah, I know, there's only so much to go around. We can't be responsible for the fact there's a school levy up there. We can't be responsible for the fact that property taxes went up. What we can be responsible for is salting their roads, fixing their roads, and fixing the wastewater, that is our job.
And I think we do a great job at that, at this point, I, I truly believe that, but I'm.
Unless I missed something, we didn't, we didn't buy a salt truck tonight, right? So we only spent a hundred and some thousand of the four hundred, I just want to make sure the record speaks, uh, clear of what, what council has done tonight. We, we spent about a little under two hundred thousand.
Sure, half the payment in July.
Yeah. So, and I, and I think as we further, further these discussions about the salt truck, it's probably going to be the, you know, splitting the baby there. If, if that passes, uh, in, in further discussions, but just want to be clear about what was spent tonight and what wasn't.
Any other? One thing I would like to say, you know, I have spent the last seven years paying water bills for strangers. So I get it, I mean, I feel like I've got a pretty good connection with that, so I understand why you want to do this. The, the thing that scares me about, and I'm, I'm for it, I, I really am. The only thing that frightens me is we're doing it without a concrete plan, that's the thing that really bothered me. And even if we vote this tonight, it's, folks have to know that it's probably very temporary. We had a gun to our head when we did twenty twenty three forty six, literally, or, yeah, forty six, when we literally had a fifty thousand dollar per occurrence. It wasn't per day, it was per occurrence during the day, if you, you pull it two or three times during that day, you, you're going to wish you had money for a salt truck, because everyone would take it from you. So that's the thing that frightens me about what we're talking about. I'm all for providing relief, I understand people are struggling, I've seen it with my own eyes. And, but folks have to know, even if this passes tonight, there's no guarantee of anything. We don't have a, a concrete plan, we have, we have a plan we started with, then we've had conditions change, and now we're stuck with where we are in a bit, bit of a limbo. I mean, there's options, but we don't have anything we can say for sure, here's what we're doing. So just, I, I just want, I don't want people to be disillusioned that this is just going to go away because we vote on this tonight. What we're doing tonight is to provide you with as much relief as we can afford to provide you with tonight. But we have, these decisions are made by people that have a lot higher pay grade than anybody sitting behind this calendar. And I, I, I don't want people to be disillusioned or disappointed if the wheel should turn and the gun comes right back to your head and you have to do it again.
I don't disagree, like, that they're probably going to go back up. But if you give somebody a little bit of cushion for six months, then we can renegotiate something, I think it's worth going.
Right?
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, these rates were created with the thought that we need seventy six million dollars. And I think it's obvious that that's not the route we're going to go. So it doesn't feel right to continue to charge our residents a rate to accumulate seventy six million dollars. Until we find a real number, we should put a pause on it, and, and I think this is a, a small pause. You know, it's not as drastic as it could have been, it could have been, um, as, as councilman, or council at large, Hal, first recommended. I think we're splitting the baby, uh, I think it's a good start, and he wanted to go back much, much greater back. Uh, so, again, you know, we're going back to last year, and unless we do something, it's not going to go up next year. So I think, I think it's a good start to, kind of, bring everything back together.
Well, to add to that point that Councilman Drew made, uh, yes, gratefully, we found an option, and through some help, we petitioned to reduce that seventy six million dollars, but it's not going down to zero for sure. Maybe half there, let's say fifty million, you know how much we've collected from our overage so far?
Million dollars?
Two million dollars. So to turn off the income for something that we know is going to cost at least fifty, regardless of what the plan says, we know we're, we're in the hole for having postponed this for so many decades. We're going to have to come up with something. So whether it's a brief pause, a longer pause, like I say, this, this boat is going to have holes in it if we don't keep at it.
Yeah, so I, I'm not going to get too far into this, or else I'm going to start picking apart your other legacy projects from back then. But I do want to apologize for the last meeting. I am not infallible, I can be incorrect, I, I rarely speak up here, because I normally don't like to say things as I know for certain. When I said that your contract with the township expired at the end of twenty five, I was wrong, I take full blame for that, shame on me, because I pulled up on my phone the last contract that the county sent. So I'm not sure why they sent me a contract that was not correct, but I looked at it before I said anything, so I was wrong on that. But a, a lot of this, I'm not going to talk about, because I'm just going to call you about all the other nonsense, uh, for your legacy projects. But I, I fully support rolling this back, DB, we always pull it up, and we love to pass things by emergency, we can raise it up again if you guys need to. But I'm, I'm going to vote yes on, on rolling this back.
We're going to just take a two-minute recess while our council member takes a quick break and then return to us within minutes. Much like my near choking incident shortly, short while ago, it'll be right back.
Watch these tics.
Yeah. The hole to be at the pieces. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I believe that was one pleasure, Steve.
Choking should never, we need the presence of others, just. Because they're embarrassed, you know, they don't want to.
I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order, and with that.
You want to call the roll?
Yes, call the roll.
Orley?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Mush and Carrie.
Please continue, that would be twenty twenty five thirty five.
First reading ordinance twenty twenty five thirty five. An ordinance amending chapter four zero six of the codified ordinances of the city of Vermillion entitled Trap the Control Map and section four zero six point zero one G entitled Establish.
That will go to a second reading, please continue.
First reading ordinance twenty twenty five thirty six. An ordinance establishing fund two thirty six, clerk computerization fund.
That will go to a second reading, please continue.
First reading ordinance twenty twenty five thirty seven. An ordinance amending section two sixty eight point oh one B two entitled Rules and Regulations of Chapter two sixty eight entitled Parts and Recreation Board of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Vermillion, Ohio.
That will also go to a second reading, please continue.
First reading ordinance twenty twenty five thirty eight. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Vermillion, Ohio to engage in two contracts for management services for the operation and maintenance of the city's cemetery.
Okay, that will also go to the second reading, so please continue.
Third reading resolution twenty twenty five R four. Resolution to approve the twenty twenty six tax budget and certifying it to the county budget commission.
Okay, can we entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five R dash four? So moved.
Second.
And we had, this is what our public media was about, I think this has been well discussed, unless there's discussion, please call the roll.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Orley?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Thank you. Our next meeting dates are May twelfth, uh, here in this room at six P M, and June second begin at six P M. All by committee meetings on June ninth at six P M in this facility, and June sixteenth, we will be back to a Vermont City Council meeting, announced, listed as candidate. And so we will be journeying into, I'm sorry, we will be going in, recessing, good executive session. And I thank everybody for coming.
I knew that was the slide by. I was waiting for you.
No, I'll have to wait for it.
Find a order, John, for your order, are you planning to come back after executive session?
We will fly up to adjourn.
Just in time to adjourn?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Barney and Porcin.
Stay here.
Did you see the weather?
Huh?
Did you see the weather?
No. Oh, yeah? Oh, wow. Are they, so they're doing the session in here? Oh, no, 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 you're good, uh, it's, sorry, yeah, 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 it's headed this way, we got extreme weather?
According to the, um, weather channel, it should be, um, eight twenty five, I don't know, so.
Okay.
But it's not as bad, you know, it looks like the purple pink is, so.
I'll keep an eye on it.
More if it's red, if not pink.
I'll keep an eye on it.
We're doing executive session in here, so everybody can.
Is that how it works?